Especially, you know, those family vehicles that are, you know, going out on a trip to soccer field and so. And the approval of a resolution that designate signature authority for the commission for Weaver Mill Bridge Project. The county and state, I would support signature authority. To be Arthur Capella with the direction of commissioners. Providing him with the wishes of this board as to who the designated signature authority would be. And who the potential program design would be coming from, whether it would be. With Tish.
That's too, that's too separate.
Well, I made the motion, seconded the motion, I wanted to.
We are, we are done with.
Well, I was just reading the, the bottom.
The next item on the agenda concerns the Weaver Mill Bridge.
Right.
Yeah, which has nothing to do with each other too.
Cause.
So, so.
Let's just. Consider approval of a resolution to designate signature authority for the Weaver Mill Bridge Project between county and state.
Commissioner Yamato, you have.
Indicated that Arthur Capella should have that.
Under the, under the after qualification.
With the commissioners.
Five seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, I was just making reference that those don't come out until next week. So it would be premature for us to make a motion on this until after. The RFQ is responded to and that response goes from Ken Dot back to Arthur and Bill Larnold and then they would subsequently review.
Item number eight, children's services. Consider ratifying fiscal year 2013-14 purchase of service agreements between county and county. Through county and county children's services, county and county juvenile operation, and Mars Room for youth access.
Move.
All those in favor? Aye. Consider ratifying a fiscal year 2013-14 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county and county children's services. County and county juvenile operation. Office for and alternate living solution. Right.
Move.
All those in favor? Aye. Consider ratifying a fiscal year 2013-14 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services. At county and county juvenile operation, families, United Network Incorporated. Right.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services and county and county international. Fixed price for the service of twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety four dollars.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county children's services, county and county juvenile operation. Prosperity Service, at Prosperity Services.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services. County and county juvenile operation and United Department of Defense Incorporated. Junior Republican.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services, county and county juvenile operation. Junior Republican.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services and county and county juvenile operation. With alternate living solutions.
Move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county children's services. County and county juvenile operation. United Department of Defense Incorporated. Right.
Move.
All those in favor? For approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services. Center.
Move. Second.
All those in favor? Consider approval of the fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county at county children's services. Through county and county children's services. United Department of Defense Incorporated.
The motion, based on the discussions I had with Gina, that this has great application regarding, um, clearances. At times bill up to size nine thousand dollars. And some other measures that sure will be made, so it's not your traditional. Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county children's services. John Coates, that's why. Represent children's services, one thousand dollars.
Second, Gina, just for the record, these are individuals that are still being assigned by the judge, correct?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider approval of fiscal year 2014-15 purchase of service agreements between county and county children's services. County and county children's services. Harvard South Penn County.
At one thousand dollars.
One and two represent children's dependency, which is three of their services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider approval of an application of credit card, not banking credit, from one thousand dollars. Youth for business purposes.
And that's the agenda we have to do, right after some.
I'm sent all through the motion.
Okay, what does this say?
Um, basically what it said, it made me know was that it would be used for independent living programs. It would be used for clearances for our staff, which is where you have to put on the credit card.
Hold on one second. Okay, so independent, for the independent living program, what else?
For our clearances, that we have to get knowledge of.
Staff, um, is that state required?
Yes.
Is state required clearances for staff, what else?
Um, it would be used to hold the toilets while we're going down.
Yeah, using on.
The problem is, is some of the certifications that you place totals up to about nine thousand dollars. You can't do it, and you can't do it individually, you got to do it in one transaction.
For the out of town hotels, normally you do it in a, in a, in a controlled office or a credit card. Are you saying this is just to hold the room?
To hold the rooms, yes.
Yes, we had a circumstance last July where my personal partner used to hold the room. So that has to be just. Well, that, that would have, I, I'm okay with the independent program and state required assistance for staff. For the out of town holding of credit cards, that's open to all or other departments. Usually, um, for the record, because I have the record.
We try to get them to direct field. Which is we call the hotel arrangement, you might have to give them a credit card.
Rinse it down.
Just, just to hold it.
Just to hold it, right. And charges are made and then they're directed, so no out of town.
Right, okay, so hold on. So it would be called.
True.
That's what I've always done, I've seen it, that's what we.
I was wondering, I know that, like, I'm going to the Navy line, they do direct field. I've had others that have. I think you probably will remember that sometimes it will be. I don't know why. In that case, the person who's going on has used their own credit card.
Well, the only thing that concerns me is that you have a policy there that if a, a request for reimbursement isn't in by such and such date. Then you won't process the check until the following week and that in itself could create a period beyond the repayment date. And then the employee's assessed with, with interest and penalty potential.
I, I would make the motion to approve the application of credit card, United Credit Bank, twenty thousand dollars. To be used solely for, one, the independent living program.
Which is?
Two, the state required clearance for staff. And three, out of town reservation holding by the staff, only if the direct field option is denied. And, and only if prior approval is submitted and given by majority.
Even if you would.
That, that would, excuse me. That would, that would work for CYS's.
And the only thing is, if we're in the middle of a month where there's no meeting, then we just submit that request copy to the controller as well as the three commissioners. And ask us to announce, so there wouldn't be any gray here.
You would take through a simple P O.
Yeah, that's correct. I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, the controllers' financial condition account. Oh, consider approval of the advertising package for addition of CYS.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, now, you know, that is to advertise the bid, who, who, who's the, um, professional entity that is taking care of that? Is that Slater Engineering? Okay, Slater Engineering is going to be responsible for placing the advertisements, um, the bid advertisements. They would go through Chief Clark and then there would be a bid opening in the conference room.
And I would ask if you could speak with Slater, because I spoke with him on several occasions, asking for information before he to me regarding. The justice rehabilitation center and, um, outside of sporadic call here or there. Who was the guy we ended up dealing with, Captain Derrick? Darren? Derrick, and that's the only way I was gonna get, able to get the blueprints because couldn't get them anywhere else and nobody wanted to give them to me.
Does any commissioner wish to see the, uh, at the NAPR.
I would like to take a look at it.
Um, as I say, the checking account has two million, four hundred fifty three thousand, seven hundred and twenty five cents. Funds over the general fund for a temporary loan to children in need, which is five three thousand dollars. And bond fund, which is two million, another million, two thousand, one hundred and forty two thousand. Our payments are due from yearly pension and financial division over the past three years. So the one hundred twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety nine dollars. Essential service payments due from six seventeen, financial division and yearly pension for the past eight and four years, so one eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. The general fund has two million, eighty thousand dollars on a tax participation. And our net position is ten, three million, one hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty one cents. Total two thousand fourteen revenues is twenty four million, two hundred thirty two thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars and twenty seven cents. Two thousand fourteen expenditures total twenty one million, five hundred four thousand, one hundred and forty two. Total two thousand thirteen expenditures paid in two thousand fourteen is one million, one hundred twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. The balance of the capital reserve fund is two hundred thirty four thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars, two hundred and thirty cents. The balance of the bond fund is two hundred thirteen thousand, eighty four dollars, twenty three cents. And the balance in the social, uh, I thirteen fund is three million, one hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred forty five dollars, twenty five cents. Of that in two thousand fourteen received one, six hundred seventy six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Question, um, we still have outstanding revenues, but it's my understanding that they're supposed to working on the procedural, um, gaming perspective. Um, we would have to go through B C D, designate Mr. Reed Alphman Authority or what have you. Still to drill down on this process, fifty percent of it will have to go to economic development. Can you, can you check with Andrew French just to see what his status is? Okay?
Uh, according to one of the things, um, yesterday, uh, they currently receive a communication from someone being on, uh, five three. Um, I can point at it. After. If you produce some information here, then you have it available today, so I want to go over something very quickly. Um, perhaps you may have all the information to confirm, to confirm what, um, what I'm about to say. Presently, the county has agreement with assessment and advisory group. Um, did the agreement sign by the commissioners in January of two thousand fourteen? And, um, the, I received, we all received communication late yesterday that, um, the company states the county has a past due invoice. And until that invoice is paid, it's a mention, it will be subcharged under the agreement to work on the two thousand fifteen budget as well as, uh, financial information. Um, it will no longer perform those duties, um, because of this outstanding invoice. Um, that is your understanding and also what you, um, emailed, yes, okay. Um, first is, first comment is, we do have an agreement, um, in state in January of two thousand fourteen. And in that agreement, it says that there are two tasks. Task one is for thirty five thousand dollars and that is for, um, approved by technical assistance and advice. Um, for, for financial assistance in the county, you have to have your audit done on a yearly basis. Task two is for fifteen thousand dollars for technical advice and technical assistance there, financial assistance and advice. Uh, for the preparation and development of two thousand fifteen budget directly.
There was some initial draw, and I thought that in addition to that, some initial request to draw, yeah.
The, the task one, um, is thirty five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The amount, and I can confirm, um, it's correct, the amount that has been billed and paid thus far is approximately twenty five thousand dollars. Um, there was another, and of that twenty five thousand dollars was submitted and a portion of that invoice was paid, less three thousand, one hundred dollars. And that three thousand, one hundred dollars was, was held paying because there were questions concerning the work that was performed. Is it correct then that under task one, for thirty five thousand dollars, that the bill, the invoice that is in question, that is past due thirty days, is approximately three thousand, one hundred dollars? Okay, so that is why, now, there were no other bills that are past due under that task, correct? We received. There are no other, oh, there are no other billed invoices that are past due, past due meaning thirty days past due, correct? So as of today and as of yesterday, that that bill that, um, um, communication was received. There is one outstanding, and it's a portion of an invoice that the county received the invoice, there was one, three thousand, one hundred dollars that is questionable. The rest was paid, thirty one hundred dollars, scale, and then I know that I was up, I was in contract with the individuals, having. Now, it's only two to three days ago, which was, um, postmarked, um, October fourteenth and or fifteenth. The county received another bill. Thirteen, okay, and that was September fifteenth. And the agreement says that upon receipt, you have thirty days to pay. Okay, so we only received.
What says due upon receipt?
Okay, due upon receipt, we received that on October thirteenth.
Well, this is post.
Okay, so, October fourteenth or fifteenth, due upon receipt, and it's the only delinquent in thirty days, that's thirty days past due, correct? Okay, so therefore, if you just because we've received it on the fourteenth or fifteenth and we have thirty days to pay, that bill is not delinquent in terms of contract and top line execution. It is certainly you are in the county, and that's really fair, you understand that? Yeah, okay, so, um, if that seventeen, and that bill just came in, in I B one, now, if that seventeen thousand dollars is, is paid. We've already paid twenty, if we pay this within the next thirty days, then we've already paid twenty five thousand, pay another seventeen thousand.
I agree.
And if I'm not over the budget, um, um, it, it goes, goes over above the agreement on contract price. Contracted price is thirty five thousand dollars.
In the language.
Pay twenty five and, um, the seventeen thousand dollars that's add on, maybe forty thousand dollars, which is well over the above. Um, the agreement clearly states, clearly states that in no event will our billing be more than thirty five thousand dollars unless unsecured or chances. And we discussed the matter with you, with your approval before we proceed. The county, at least I, in my senior request, for that work to be done.
No, no.
Nor did another commissioner, so therefore, as of, as of today, or as of yesterday, when I came, um, just received it fourteen or fifteenth, um, that was one. Okay, if that is, as I said, that's true, that's going to make this bill, um, over the contract price of forty two thousand dollars plus. We received notification that, um, Sam Lynch is requesting an additional thirty two hours of working work at a hundred and seventy five dollars an hour to complete the remodel work. Which is five thousand, six hundred dollars, plus whatever his travel expenses, that is going to make this point show. The forty eight thousand dollars, when, when what we have agreed upon and has been voted on, thirty five thousand dollars.
So the.
Okay, so, so, to wrap this up, we received a, a notification that our financial consultant, who has been, uh, had contracts with the county for years. Is not, is not going to come on site because we have a three thousand, one hundred dollar past due invoice that is in dispute. And that I have in writing asked for clarification, detailed invoices at an onsite meeting, and that has never occurred. And it was only asked for just recently, it was recently. So that's the first issue, and we. The second is the task two is fifteen thousand dollars. Um, there has not been, there's not a requisition and, um, we don't, we don't have to give them that yet. It has not reached your campus. Therefore, it hasn't been, it hasn't reached the commissioner's office, I signed off. As of yesterday at five, about five thirty, did not reach the commissioner's office because I went in and I signed in. So, so what we have here is a situation that I would like you to please take the four page, very easily read agreement and please get it to John Cop. Okay, uh, John is the county solicitor, you've seen this agreement, I know that you have, um, we need to discuss this because we cannot have, um, a financial accountant, a financial consultant. He said they specifically said that the county breached, um, contract, because of thirty days past due. That goes in dispute, and in addition to that, they have reached a contract by, um, providing seventeen thousand dollars worth of services in the month of December without having our approval. And they're writing, we need to have.
Also, I would like to request, um.
Yes, by all means, you can be the topic of the invoices, just so you know, this all began because the commissioner questioned an invoice and asked if the invoice would be detailed instead of saying. Book with Chief Clark for an hour, which it says we're, uh, met with children and youth services for an hour. We need to have it detailed, and I question that, and all of a sudden, we're not going to do any work with it, but we have three thousand, one hundred dollars.
And also, if I may, I would like to see all of the contracts that the county has with Suscan and any affiliate, uh, thereof. And what monies have been paid, uh, and copies of that contract to, to show, because, uh, Mark Lundquist is here. We had him do financials on the prison. Um, never once did we authorize Mr. Lynch to do anything on the prison. And yet we got a bill, how much?
Thirty one hundred dollars.
Thirty one hundred dollars, now, that's Mark's stuff contract, it worked out, I don't think it was.
Well, he's shaking his head no, that is enough, and then also, the county, um, was, yeah, it, Suscan provided, um, requested information from the board's office. So that he provided financial information, just covering.
I mean, I have my personal reasons I'll share with you another day, but this is just a bad business practice. I hope Mark will take that back to his superiors, uh, and the, the, the tone of this email, which clearly was written by some, I don't even think Mr. Gordon wrote the email. Um, is disrespectful, especially to a partner, not that means the county, the relationship we've had with Suscan for the last six plus years.
So we had, we had two, but.
At least of the majority, at least of the three, two to three commissioners.
But that, that also, I want, I want to part, I left the public. But that, that's also, I want, I want to part, I, let's, let's call it, nothing just that. We open with, with the budget process, because that's what we were all, we passed about, adopted that idea, and then we continue to do that. Chief Clark, um, who was hired, um, this had been in his department, which was, um, preparation of the budget. So she will continue to, we have worked with insurance, and that is, which is, you have to, um, talk to government, and, 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 and. Hopefully, the house will stay here. On.
Thanks.
Item number ten.